This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you for joining the City of Kingston's Common Council at our monthly meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 5th. My name is Andrea Schott, the council president and organizer for our virtual meetings. Before we begin our meeting, we would like to go over a few guidelines to help us navigate the system as efficiently and respectfully as possible. We ask that members of the public and press remain muted and off-camera for the length of the meeting. As organizer, I reserve the right to mute anyone who unmutes themselves. Council members and city staff will control their own mute button. Good practice would be to mute yourself if you are not speaking to avoid background noise and feedback. If a council member or staff wishes to speak, they will raise their hands. The chairperson will call on them before they speak by stating their name clearly for our audio listeners. All of our meetings are recorded. Both video and written transcriptions will be made available to the public on the city's website at a later date. We will not have public speaking at tonight's meeting. Written comments were submitted to the city clerk and distributed to the council this afternoon following our new procedure. We encourage you to reach out to your ward's representative or the council president at any time with concerns or questions, and you could submit written comments leading up to the next month's council meeting. If you have any audio issues, send a text message to the following number: 845-594-6120. I'll repeat this number again, but be aware that phone calls will not be received during the meeting. The number to text is 845-594-6120. As the organizer for today's meeting, I reserve the right to lock and pause the meetings to eject anyone who has behaved inappropriately. Tonight, the presiding officer is council president, myself, Andrea Schott. City staff, we have clerk, Olisa Tinti. Corporation counsel, Kevin Bryant. Corporation counsel, Lynn Gardenstein. And council members will be announced during our roll call in a few minutes. Thank you for your patience during these difficult times, and on behalf of the Common Council, I wish you and your family good health. This meeting is now called to order at 7:35 PM on May 5th, 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. May I please have a roll call?
Alderman, Mr. Moorel.
Here.
Alderman Coop.
Here.
Alderman Scott Childress.
Present.
Alderman Worthington.
Here.
Alderman Tolloman.
Here.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderman O'Reilly.
Here.
Alderman Shabbitt.
Yeah.
And Alderman Hirsch.
Here.
We have a quorum. Can I have a motion to dispense for the minutes of the previous meeting and approve same? Motion by Steve Shabbitt, second by Patrick O'Reilly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is adopted 9-0. Can I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the general bills? Motion by Tony Davis, second by Patrick O'Reilly. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is adopted 9-0. We will not have public speaking tonight. Written comments were submitted and delivered by the city clerk. We received comments from Clark Richters, Alfred Peavy from Ulster County Board of Realtors, Giovanna Ragini, Maria Philippus, and Sarah Wenck. The public can find the comments on the meeting's agenda under Public Speaking located on the city website. We now enter into Claims and Communications. There's no discussion. They will be on file in the clerk's office. And I get a motion to dispense with the second reading of the general bills and passing. Motion by Tony Davis, second by Steve Shabbitt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is adopted 9-0. We now enter into the report of committees, starting with Resolution Number 84.
Resolution 84 of 2020. Memorializing Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, Supporting Emergency Rental Assistance Legislation.
On the question? Alderman Hirsch.
Yes, thank you, President Schott. I would like to thank Chairman of Laws and Rules, Jeffrey Moorel, and the committee for passing the resolution in committee. New York State Senator Kavanaugh's bill establishes a COVID-19 emergency rental assistance program for the state, and it's designed to pay for rent for anybody who's lost income, especially a significant loss of income in New York State. This subsidy voucher would be different. It would cover a much higher rent than those programs normally cover. It's ideal to keep all New Yorkers in their homes. And what is also significant is that it makes sure that landlords are getting the money that they need to pay their taxes, maintain their buildings, and pay their workers. The passing of this state legislation would be significant to help both stabilize tenants and landlords in the City of Kingston. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing no more discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Resolution adopted 9-0. Moving to Resolution 85.
Resolution 85 of 2020. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the Common Council of the City of Kingston to declare itself lead agency with regard to proposed changes to the zoning code of the City of Kingston.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted 9-0. Moving to Resolution 86.
Resolution 86 of 2020. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing a copy of the legislation for the proposed changes to the zoning code of the City of Kingston be referred for comment to the City of Kingston Planning Board, Ulster County Planning Board, and Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted 9-0. We now move to Resolution 87.
Resolution 87 of 2020. An ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, amending Section 390-89, section, I'm sorry, Schedule 11 prohibiting terms of the Kingston City Code on Greenhill Avenue.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted 9-0. We now move to Resolution 88.
Resolution 88 of 2020. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing an increase in associated revenue and expense accounts for activities related to the city's Restore New York Round 4 grant in the amount of $195,000.
On the question, Alderman Scott Childress.
Yes, for those listening, I'd like to point out that this is a pass-through grant. The city is not responsible for this money. This does not represent the city spending $195,000. It's simply a requirement of state law that this grant passed through the city to RUPCO to help defray costs for its Energy Square building. I spoke with the comptroller today. He's quite sure that the city would in no way be on the hook for this money. One of the concerns is that the state might not be able to, or might not pay on grants like this. It seems extremely unlikely that the state will not pay on grants that are for buildings like this one that are nearing completion. Clearly, they're going to be looking at future projects and reducing probably grant monies in the future, but I think that this is really important that we pass this tonight precisely because it doesn't require any spending on the city's part.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Hearing no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted 9-0. We now move to Resolution 89.
Resolution 89 of 2020. An ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to the traffic on the public streets of the City of Kingston, New York, removing handicap parking on Aura Place.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted 9-0. We now move to Resolution Number 90.
Resolution 90 of 2020. An ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to the traffic on the public streets of the City of Kingston, New York, adding handicap parking on Ravine Street.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted 9-0. We now move to Resolution Number 91.
Resolution 91 of 2020. An ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to the traffic on the public streets of the City of Kingston, New York, adding a stop sign at the intersection of Westbrook Place and Sharon Lane.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted 9-0. Moving to Resolution Number 92.
Resolution 92 of 2020. Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, amending the zoning map to extend the mixed-use overlay district to include 51 Schwenck Drive, tax map number
On the question?
Just want to let you know I will be recusing myself from this vote.
Can you state your reason why?
Yeah, I'm an employee of Herzog's.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Resolution is adopted 7-2. The opposition was Alderman Jeffrey Ventura Moorel and Steve Shabbitt's recusal, for our listeners. Moving to Resolution Number 93.
Resolution 93 of 2020. An ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, amending Section 390-56, Article 7, parking prohibited in general areas of the Kingston City Code to include no parking in designated bike lanes.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted 9-0. We now move to Resolution Number 94.
Resolution 94 of 2020. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, approving amendments to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, for the years 2020 and 2021.
On the question? Alder Roman Hirsch.
I'll be recusing myself from this vote as I work for Family of Woodstock.
Thank you. Alderman Scott Childress, and then Alderman Shabbitt.
I'd like to thank all the members of the Community Development Committee. That would be members Shabbitt, Worthington, Tolloman, Ventura, Moorel, and Coop. This is a big task. I do know that we've talked some about being even more involved in it, but it's also a really important task. This is federal money that we get to use to improve the lives of lots of people here in Kingston, and this is hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're able to use to really help folks in all kinds of different sectors of the city. So we're extremely excited to be able to do this, and I applaud the members for their hard work in thinking through this project and the way to give out this money. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Shabbitt.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'm going to follow up on that. This is my first time chairing that committee. I've sat in on many in the past, and I know it's not an easy task. You would kind of think giving away money would be a lot of fun, but it's really not. It's a real challenge to distribute this money, what we consider fairly. We had very good input from the committee. Actually, it moved along pretty well. You know, I thought we did well on it. We haven't heard too many complaints, so that's a good thing. So again, I just want to thank everybody. It was a pleasure working with everybody, and you know, I can't wait to see the money get to those that need it.
Thank you. Alderman Coop, and then Alderman Ventura Moorel.
I'd just like to say kudos to Chairman Steve Shabbitt for running very smooth meetings. Very good job, Steve. Thank you.
Alderman Ventura Moorel.
Yes, I also was going to thank Alderman Shabbitt for running very smooth meetings. I would also like to thank the staff of the Community Development Department, especially Brenda Robinson and Amy Peterson, who sit with us at all the meetings. And this is one of the most rewarding things I get to do as an alderman. It is a painful process at times, but it's rewarding to know that we are doing a little bit, even if not everybody gets everything they ask for, that we're at least doing a little bit to help the community. So, thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Alderman Scott Childress.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I would just like to clarify to anyone who may be confused. This CDBG money is separate from the CARES allotment that we've received from the federal government. That's being administered through the same CDBG process, and the proposals for that money are due tomorrow, I believe, right? Isn't that right?
Yes.
Yes, so we will follow something of the same procedure where the mayor and the members of the CDBG committee will look over all the proposals and think about how best to allot that $440,000, which is separate from this amount of money that we're talking about tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else on the, Alderman Shabbitt?
Yeah, I'd just like to add to that. The new round has kind of been streamlined a little bit. The application process is not quite as lengthy and detailed as the original, but you know, we still need proof that people need money. You know, we have to see bookkeeping. We have to, you know, we really have to do our homework on this, the same as we did the last time. Just because we're in a crisis situation doesn't mean we're not going to be more lenient. We're trying to make it easier, but you know, there's still going to be criteria that has to be followed.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Hearing no more discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted 8-1, with the one vote being Alderman Hirsch's recusal. We now move to Resolution Number 95.
Resolution 95 of 2020. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the suspension of the repair work being conducted at 43 to 45 North Front Street, and a stop work order be issued.
Anyone on the question? Alderman Coop, and then Alderman Davis. Doug, unmute yourself, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. As a finance chairman, I strongly oppose this resolution. By authorizing the suspension and a stop work order, the city incurs a very large cost, could be as much as $90,000 for a 10-week suspension, which is over 60% of the original contract cost. And this would occur at a time when the city can least afford it. It also leaves a large physical gap in the North Front Street canopy row, and most of that row is structurally sound. I think it's interesting that just this afternoon, the city engineer has said, quote, and I'm quoting him, "It seems best to complete the current project within the $148,000 contract." So I urge my colleagues to vote against this. But if this resolution does pass, I'd like to point out that under the time and heavy cost pressures induced by it, I really earnestly hope that the council will use this opportunity to finally decide after years and years, and do this at an early date, the ultimate future of the entire pipe plant. To repair in sequential sets and maintain or demolish it completely. In this regard, I remind you that the initial estimates of the city engineer suggest that the demolition or tear-down cost far exceed the repair and maintenance cost. And whereas some building owners favor complete removal, I ask you to please recall the recent survey results that indicated widespread community support for the pipe plant. I will be a definite no vote on this. Thank you.
Alderman Davis.
Alderman Davis here. I wish we had these figures that we've received this afternoon from the city engineer in regard to what the cost would be and to suspend this. And you know, this is suspended for two weeks. I believe it's going to be $50,000. If it's a 10 weeks, it's almost $100,000. And we've already, we authorized originally, I believe, $148,000 to work on this section of the canopy. And I know I was the one who motioned to, and suspend this work, but at the time, I did not have these, nobody had these figures here that we just received today of what the cost would be to suspend this for just two weeks, or in 10 weeks. And it's almost the cost of, you know, the entire, what we've authorized this back for $148,000. And so, you know, seeing that is, I know we received some communications last night, or this morning, in regard to, I didn't receive any, we didn't receive any that were saying that they wanted the pipe plant to remain as it was, and the communications that we received were all in favor of, and thinking about demolishing the pipe plant and leaving it as it is right now so people could come around and see what it would look like in its current state. So, I mean, I'm going towards what the city engineer, who's more, you know, more expertise in this, in regard to this, and it seems like he's favoring that we should cause it a cost and associate it with suspending it, and what we've already, or previous resolutions already stated, that we should go ahead and complete this project as is and not suspend it. And so I would be, you know, just because of that, I would be in favor of removing this resolution and going ahead and completing this project as it is for the $148,000 at this time. But I would also like to say, as Alderman Doug Coop says, "We cannot continue to keep on pushing this off and off. We have to make a decision one way or the other." And as Doug said, and Alderman O'Reilly stated yesterday with the survey in regard to more people and citizens in favor of keeping the canopy than business owners and not in favor of keeping the canopy. I think if we're going to send out, we need to send a new survey, and we need to put on there exactly what the cost is. We can't just say, "Do you want the canopy or not?" We need to make sure that we're saying, "If we keep the canopy, this is what the cost is going to be. If we don't keep the canopy, if we demolish it, this is what the cost is going to be to the taxpayers." So now the taxpayers all have all the information in front of them to make an educated decision in regard to if the city, the people in the City of Kingston are in favor of keeping this canopy or not. Thank you.
Alderman Tolloman, and then Alderman Shabbitt.
Thank you. This is Don Tolloman. Thank you, President Schott. So I agree with Tony and with Doug. The bigger picture is we must make a decision on what to do long-term. I also agree with what Tony just said, that it's frustrating that we just got these numbers from the contractor to the engineer saying what the cost would be if we do pause, and that makes it seem like, well, it doesn't make sense to pause anymore because these costs are so high. But I'm looking at these costs, and I'm seeing a contractor who is taking advantage of the city. I see a contractor who is holding us hostage. To be charging us $22,000 just to take down his scaffolding and pause his work seems completely unfair and outrageous to the city, you know? So I still believe we should pause, but these egregious estimates for pausing and paying the contractor, $5,000, in addition to $22,000, paying the contractor $5,000 per week just for them to wait, to pause on top of that, and then to begin again to charge us another $18,000, this is a firm that's taking advantage of us when we're trying to do our best to make the right decision. And I say, "But, you know, let's pause and let's challenge this contractor because this is not fair. This is not fair what they're doing by pushing these, by putting these numbers to the engineer's office."
Alderman Shabbitt.
Yeah, a lot of things have changed since last night. I mean, I thought last night was pretty clear that we should stop, rethink, make sure we get it right. We did discuss last night the two polls that went out. I mean, my recollection, it was pretty overwhelming that both business owners and the citizens of Kingston wanted the pipe plant to remain in place. You know, the fact that all of a sudden now people don't want to, I'm not sure whether we should change our plans. I do, I agree with Don. This doesn't seem right, what the contractor is charging, but I'm presuming that's what the contract says. I don't have a contract in front of me to say that he is entitled to these. I mean, I can't imagine he's just, you know, holding us up for no reason. It has to be in black and white that he's able to do that. And if that's the case, we really, you know, other than asking him very nicely not to charge us, you know, I don't think we have much recourse than to pay him what the contract reads. So, you know, last night, you know, I was all set to say, "Let's put a hold on it," but after reading John's letters, and I have a great respect for John, and I value his opinions on this, I would like to see this continue on. So I'll vote against the resolution.
Just for clarification, it was a verbal agreement. There is no contract yet because it's been the 11th hour, so those numbers are the verbal agreement. Alderman Scott Childress?
Yes, thank you. This is Alderman Scott Childress. The way I see it, from what we're talking about with all the numbers flying around, there are basically four options that we're looking at. The first one would be to honor the present contract, $148,000 for both the demolition of the section at 43 to 45, and then rebuilding that section so that it looks like the adjacent sections. Option number two would be around $100,000 to stop now. This is the communication from John Schultheis, our city engineer, at 7:15 tonight, because not only would there be the various costs that are in the contract, but there would all be... also be the costs for taking down and removing the scaffolding and so forth. There are also materials that have been ordered, and it's not clear whether those materials would be able to be returned. There's also the issue of what would the cost be if we were to stop now, and who would make the ends of the two adjacent aspects of the canopy look whole? In other words, we don't want to just leave it hanging there. Somebody's got to finish that off so that it looks purposeful. Option three is to spend probably more than $100,000 to pause, no matter how we cut it. That's going to be expensive, that's going to require us also to spend money to do nothing, to spend money on air and time. The fourth option is the potential cost to stop and then demolish more of the Pike plant running all the way down to where Wall Street comes in. Now, that, even with different estimates that we've gotten, none of which are actual estimates, these are, you know, communicated to us verbally, they are not the product of an RFP. We're probably looking at $150,000, something like that, maybe even more. Now, one last thing to consider, of the four options, only one of them has some certainty in it, and that's option number one. We have contracted $148,000 to demolish and repair that section, and the other three options all introduce uncertainty. They mean that we can't be sure what's going to happen if we follow on those. It could be cheaper a little bit for some of those options, in some ways could be more expensive, could be a lot more expensive, we just don't know. And I'd also like to recall to everyone why it is we tore down that section in the first place, and that was because we wanted to repair a dangerous situation. And so it seems to me that that is the best course. While I actually am now leaning toward eventually removing significant portions of the Pike plant or revising them so that they're made of glass or some other very see-through material instead of the heavy kind of feel that it's got now, the problem with the options two through four and uncertainty is that we are entering into a very difficult economic time, and so uncertainty is probably cubed, if not, you know, 10 times worse than usual. So in terms of this actual specific piece of legislation, I'm leaning toward right now voting against any extension or any pause in the current contract.
Alderman Davis?
This is Alderman Davis here. And again, Randy, you made great points on the four options, and that again is, and I want to reiterate, if we had, I wish we had this information last night when we were discussing it, and it might have, it would have definitely changed my mind in regard to pausing this because we would have had all the figures there. The reason, so that is the reason why I said that I would be in favor of removing this resolution, however it may be, and because, you know, feasible of the taxpayers' money is $148,000, and to waste that if we were to pause it and not be unsure, the unknown dollar amount, if we were to bring it back up and start again, it's going to cost more. And at this time, in this economic time, I want to just be financially responsible for whatever money that we're spending, and we're spending to our best of our abilities. And so that is why I believe, you know, going ahead with this at this time is the best option. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the question? Alderman O'Reilly?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. The Pike plant is getting old. It's been refurbished not long ago, though. And as for the lighting, there's been skylights put in because it did seem to be a little dim underneath the awnings years ago, but they've put skylights in to help with the light for the businesses. And that's, that's been wonderful, actually. You know, it keeps the snow off us and the rain off of us, and we can talk to people standing underneath these canopies. It's actually very nice, and I've seen concerts out in the street. Lovely, lovely, people line the streets and, you know, just resting under the canopies. I see restaurants starting up with little tables out front, looks like Paris up there kind of a little bit. And it warms my heart to see this kind of, these kind of businesses happening, and it's all happening under the canopy. Those businesses haven't been exposed to rain or any kind of elements in many, many years. If we rip those canopies off, we have a whole nother problem on our hands. We have to reshore the facades of those buildings, too. And then who's responsible to maintain those holes and crevices and whatever else we're going to find underneath there, too? So we have, we have to think about that expense. That's an extra expense, Don, that we have, we're going to have going forward. You know, the windows no longer, they haven't been exposed to any water in years and years. So we have, there's underlying conditions, too, I'm sure that we haven't, we haven't thought about. The citizens of Kingston like the Pike plant, they want it to continue, and I do, too. The reason that the business owners don't like it, I think one of the main reasons is because the present administration and other administrators haven't taken care of the Pike plant. They need to send people up there with clock guns and take care of it, maintain it. If it was maintained and it was painted and we maintained this, none of these things would happen. If we caught this earlier on, I'm sure it was reported a lot earlier that we started fixing it. If we maintained this structure appropriately, I don't think anybody would be complaining about it. We need to get up there, we need to paint it, we need to maintain it, we need to get a schedule. We've talked about this many times. I don't think it's happening, and the reason I don't think it's happening, because the president administration, I think, doesn't want the canopy. So I think what we need to do is get that maintenance schedule going, keep the canopy up, keep it for the citizens of Kingston. It's a wonderful thing. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Alderman Hirsch?
Yes, Alderman Hirsch here. I feel like it's very unfortunate that we received all of these last-minute costs, the last minute after a special finance meeting last night where we gathered together to make a decision, and now everything has changed last minute. I'd like to make a motion that we send this back to committee.
We have a motion on the floor to send this resolution back to committee? Is there a second? Motion is denied, there's no second. Anyway, Alderman Tolloman?
Thank you, President Schott. I just want to share some of the real costs associated with, beside, with keeping this structure, and we're going to just, we're going to make our choice, I think, in future council committee meetings and council meetings, but I've gone over the numbers very closely with John Schultheis, and there's a lot of bad problems with the Pike plant, with the canopy now. There's many sections that's rotted, and the estimate is $450,000 just to get caught up, and then $105,000 per year to maintain. So just to fix it up and get it where it should be is going to be over $700,000. I just, and then after that $700,000 is spent annually will be about $100,000 to $110,000 every year beyond that. So, you know, Patrick can talk about how much the citizens enjoy it when they are asked if they want to pay more taxes to keep it beautiful, we may get a different answer from the public, but I just want everybody to be clear that if we do go ahead and rebuild the section at Boyson's and then we're forced to maintain it, this is putting us down a path to say, to spend $700,000, which is, again, the deferred maintenance of $450,000, the $148,000 we're spending to fix this section by Boyson's, and the $105,000 for the ongoing maintenance for this year. So we'll be, by going down this road and saying, "Yes, let's rebuild that section," if we decide later to catch up with our maintenance and then maintain it ongoing, we're talking about a $700,000 number now, and then $100,000 or more continual. So these are big numbers in a time when we can't, well, we're looking at major budget cuts coming, so it's going to be a very tough decision, and I just want to make it clear that if we go ahead and rebuild this section now, we will, we seem to be going down the road of keeping it, fixing it up, maintaining it, which could be beautiful, but will be expensive, very expensive.
Alderman Scott Childress? Just reminding people, Alderman, that there's, you get two chances to speak on the floor. Alderman Scott Childress, please?
This is Alderman Scott Childress. Yeah, I would actually, if folks want to still continue to discuss, then I would like to move to suspend the rules to allow Alderman people to speak as many times as they want to on this, particularly because we have gotten recent information, and there's some fair amount of money on the table here.
Does the motion to suspend the rules, is there a second? Tony Davis seconds it? All in favor?
Aye.
To suspend the rules to discuss? Can I see, can you keep your thumbs up? Thank you. Aye, opposed? Alderman Coop, how do you vote to suspend the rules? You have to unmute yourself.
I abstain.
What was that?
I abstain, I abstain.
My motion to suspend the rules for Alderman to talk more than twice goes through, seven to two. Alderman Davis?
Again, Alderman Davis here. And Don, I understand, Alderman Tolloman, I understand what you're talking about, going down this road. And again, I just want to stress that we've already, in the previous resolution, already approved this $148,000 to square up that, and Boyson, that location there. And again, it comes back to, I wanted to, you know, spend the taxpayers' money feasibly, and I don't want to just throw it away as, and some, I'm not sure if Doug or Randy's mentioned, if we go down the road where we're pausing, and 60, you know, $60,000 basically, $50,000 is going to be wasted money if we have to, you know, pause this and then go back and complete this, then it's like really throwing $60,000 away, and we can just get this project completed and, at this section, and then be able to discuss what's going to go, what's going to happen in the future.
Before we move to discussion, Alderman Coop, can you give a reason why you abstained from the vote that has to be on the record?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
It has to be on the record why you abstained from the vote?
Oh, I'm not partial one way or the other. I'd like to bring it to, I'd like to bring it to a vote, but if people want to talk some more, that's fine also. I don't have strong feelings one way or the other.
Okay, did you have anything else to say?
Was to suspend the rules, and I'm comfortable with that. I would have been comfortable if we did not suspend the rules.
Okay. Anybody else on the question? Alderman Scott Childress?
Yes, Randy Scott Childress here. So I'm listening to the numbers that Don gave us, I'd like to clarify. So Don, when you're talking about maintenance, that figure was for the entire, the maintenance figure was for the entire Pike plant, right? So even if we went the route of taking down, leaving down the section we're talking about, or perhaps even taking down more of the section on North Front Street, it actually, we would still be paying the maintenance for the other sections, right?
Yes, yes. And just one more number, which also came from John Schultheis. If we did in the end choose to tear down the entire structure, it would be, and fix the facades of the buildings, it would be a million dollars. So $700,000 to keep it up, a million to tear it down. And just to address Patrick O'Reilly's thought about the facades, that would include fixing them up structurally so that they're waterproof and that the wood, any rotted wood is replaced, but then it would be up to building owners to paint them and keep, make them look nice.
Alderman Hirsch?
Alderman Hirsch here, curious if the numbers were an official RFP that Don is quoting, Alderman?
No, no, these are numbers that I reviewed with John and had lengthy discussions and based on other contractors' bids, but not official, not official, no.
Alderman Scott Childress?
Alderman Scott Childress. I would, I would wonder if Alderman Ventura Morrell or if Alderman Worthington have any comments to make, any feelings one way or another? Fine, if you don't, I'm just curious.
Alderman Worthington?
Hi, Rita Worthington here. So just listening to everybody, you know, first of all, I'm just a little, I'm a little disturbed that we just got the numbers today. You know, this is a big decision to make, we're talking about a lot of money here, and so I just feel like we don't have enough information, and maybe it may make sense to have John Schultheis come in and give us some figures again. I know, Don, Alderman Tolloman, you talked to him, or maybe we should reach out ourselves and talk to him, but I think with all of the conversation that's going on right now, the discussion and the questions, I don't feel ready to even vote on this tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Ventura Morrell?
Yes, I agree with what, thank you, Madam President. I agree with what Alderman Worthington just said. I don't feel like we have the information, that we had enough time to review the information that was given, so I don't, I don't know, I'm still very torn on this, because reading the communications we received from the public, it seems reasonable to leave it open so that we can look, see what it would look like without, and then make an informed decision, but I'm also not in favor of spending extra money just to do that.
There are a lot of hands that went up all at once, so Alderman O'Reilly was first, then Alderman Hirsch, then I see the other two as well. Alderman O'Reilly?
Yeah, I just wanted, Alderman O'Reilly, I just wanted to tell Alderman Hirsch, the engineer often gives us figures like this. They're ballpark figures, what, you know, what he estimates they may be. What he does is he takes a look at one section, says, "Oh, that's $100,000, there's 10 sections, that's a million dollars." So that's how he explained to us how he decides those costs. The real cost, he has no, you know, not an idea about, you know, an exact idea, but he's making estimates when he, when he gives Don those figures. They could be, I've seen estimates on Wilbur Avenue that skyrocketed from what they originally were, so you never know, you know, you just never know, and the engineer doesn't know either, because you don't know what happens when you tear down structures. Thank you.
Alderman Hirsch, and then Alderman Davis, and Alderman Tolloman, then Alderman Shabbat. So Alderman Hirsch?
I just wanted to say that it sounds like others are agreeing that we don't have enough information, and maybe, again, we should go back to committee. And maybe, again, we should go back to committee.
Is that a motion?
Ah, yes, I'd like to make a motion to send this back to committee, to the Finance Committee.
Is there a second? Second by Jeffrey Ventura Morrell. So the question is, on the on the question of sending it back to committee, Alderman Scott Childress. So now the discussion is to send this back to committee.
I I'll yield till later, but other.
So the, again, the discussion right now is to send this back to committee or not? Alderman Davis?
Alderman Davis here. My 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 question is concerned, if we send it back to committee, that means this contractor is then going to pause, which if we don't, so this this figures that we got from the engineer department, that's, it saves two weeks. You're talking fifty thousand dollars for him to stop, for him to just pause right now. Fifty thousand dollars for him to take his scaffolding down, two weeks, five thousand dollars, and then eighteen thousand dollars for him to put the scaffolding back up when he starts again. So that is my concern of referring it back to committee, because it's going to be at least two weeks. And then these figures could be a little lower, they could be a little higher from what the engineers say. And so that means we are now, we've, the taxpayers' money, fifty thousand dollars is just gone out the door, and 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 nothing's been done. So that's my concern in regard to send it back.
All right, again, this is about sending it back. Alderman Shabbat, and then Alderman Coop, and then Alderwoman Hirsch. Alderman Shabbat?
Thank you. I would prefer we finish up the conversation before we, before we get into a motion about sending it back. There's a lot of conversation going on, which may affect whether we want to send it back. You know, there are several people still with their hands up to discuss this. I would rather, I would rather finish that. And I think we'd have a better handle on whether we want to send it back to the committee or whether we want to continue on tonight. I do have a question. I I think Alderman Davis just alluded to that. If we put this off, we are in essence stopping the process. So don't we have to compensate the contractor for this? I mean, this is the reason we're compensating, because we're going to stop him. Sending it back to committee is going to stop the work from going on. So therefore, I would think we would still be on the hope to compensate this guy.
I I believe that's true, Steve.
I'm not quite sure. And I would also, I'd like to say one more thing. I know I've heard a lot of, a lot of voices say they're unhappy because we got the information so late. I'm not a big fan of getting it so late, but, and I don't want to speak for John. You know, but, you know, I think, you know, we just really started discussing this last night. I don't think we knew, because this is all a verbal discussion with the contractor. Don wasn't quite sure. He, I think he did a good job to get us these answers before tonight. It is short notice, but at least we have some information here to go on. I mean, you know, my vote is changing, changed based on that, even as late as it is. You know, I'm convinced that my decision last night was not the the decision to go forward with tonight, based on John's information. But he didn't have that last night to tell us. I think he, again, he did a good job of getting a hold of this guy and what whatever conversation. I don't know if he met him or talked on the phone, just to get a handle on what the actual cost was going to be for us. So, you know, so I will, I would not support a motion to send it back to committee until we're done with our conversation here.
All right, we still have a motion in a second to send this back to committee, so that's what we're discussing. If there's anything on that, Alderman Davis, or Alderman Coop was first, sorry, and then Alderman Davis?
Thank you, Alderman Coop here. Sending it back to committee is essentially a stop work order, which will cost us money every day. Makes no sense to me. Thank you.
Alderman Davis?
I just want to be making our record that I, you know, no way that I'm blaming on the city engineer for giving these figures now. I know we had this discussion last, yesterday, and I'm just making it that if we had this discussion maybe last month or something like that, we could have get the figures. But in no way am I saying that, you know, putting blame on the city engineer, John Schulteis. So I just want to be on record is that, you know, I'm not blaming him for this, for us just getting these figures then.
We have Alderwoman Hirsch, Alderman Ventura Morrell, Alderwoman Worthington, and Alderman Talerman. So Alderwoman Hirsch first?
Alderwoman Hirsch here. I'm in no way blaming our engineer or the City of Kingston for the last minute numbers. Actually feel like we are being held hostage by the construction company because they're responding to our, asking them of the question, what would happen? And so I feel like they're actually taking advantage of us. And as Alderman Talerman said earlier, we should go back to them and see if something else can be worked out. And that is why I'm just in favor of sending this back to committee and seeing if we can work something out with the company. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Alderman Ventura Morrell, I see you, Alderman O'Reilly. We have, we have a queue going here. Alderman Ventura Morrell?
Thank you, Madam President, Jeffrey Ventura Morrell here. Yes, I, when I second, even though I made the second to send it back to committee, it did not occur to me that that would imply an additional cost. So even though I seconded, I will be voting against sending it back to committee now that I'm made aware of that. And I also want to echo what everybody else said. I, my frustration is not with the engineer, it's with the, just with the timing and the fact that this all feels very rushed.
Right. Alderwoman Worthington, then Talerman, and then O'Reilly?
Rita Worthington here. Yeah, just to echo all of the previous Alderman that spoke about, it's, you know, it's clear, you know, in no way are we blaming our engineer for getting these numbers to him. He couldn't get them to us until he got them himself. So, you know, that's a fact. So, but again, I was not clear on if we send it back to to committee. I didn't know that would, in essence, be saying that we're pausing this. So I will not be voting to send it back to committee. However, I do wish that we could go back to this contractor, you know, in the interim and negotiate some better fees, because it does seem like we're left in just a position where we don't have a choice. And, you know, to make, to make decisions based on not having a choice is unfortunate. So, you know, I won't vote to send it back to committee. And, you know, clearly, something needs to happen tonight.
Alderman Talerman, and then Alderman O'Reilly?
Thank you, this is Don Talerman. So that's the reason I don't want to send it to committee, because that, I don't want to expose ourselves to incurring these charges. However, if we pause, we can stop the contractor, and there will be a termination fee of around eighty thousand dollars just to to stop work, which is a little bit more than half of it could go. I think Rennie, John had emailed you that it could be a little bit more than that, eighty to ninety. But that would be the limit of the damage. That if we told the contractor tomorrow to stop, we would have to pay them in the neighborhood of eighty to ninety thousand dollars. And what will, and we'll have not quite half the job finished. So it is expensive for tearing down the section. But at least we're not going to get hit with all of their other charges. And then we will have time to revisit this on our own schedule. So that's why I think that pausing is the best option. We'll take our hit and and then come together and decide what we're doing for the, for the, for the future, for the Pike Plan.
Alderman O'Reilly, and then Alderman Scott Childress?
Thank you, Alderman O'Reilly. You know, when you go into a contract with someone like a contractor, they have expenses. They have schedules to keep, they have employees to pay. It's, it's not uncommon that they're going to, they're going to charge people who decide to stop in the middle of a project for those fees going forward for the, for the time. This is a common business practice. That's why it's called a contract. If you're breaking it, you're breaking it, and you're going to have to pay for it. And you're going to have to pay a lot of money for this one, because it's a big, it's a big contract. We shouldn't be breaking contracts anyhow. This, I've been following this very closely. I care very much about Uptown Kingston. This was carefully thought out. We've been talking about this for a long, long time, before Michelle and Don were on the council. And this has been planned out. We've, we've looked at every aspect of this thing, tearing it down, not tearing it down, tearing down sections. We've looked at all this before. Now, we have a business owner that wants, you know, to leave it down, and they go to the mayor, and here we are, right? After years of discussion about this, and now this happens. And it's going to cost the City of Kingston money? Because a few business owners want to tear down a section of the Pike Plan? No way, this has been too long in discussion, this has been too long in planning. We're halfway there, let's put this thing up. If people really want to tear this down, right, if people really want to tear this down, let's do what Tony said, let's send out a new survey. Let's not, let's not spend that's eighty thousand dollars right now for half a project, we're just going to leave it hanging. You know, you got to, you got to make that thing, you got to shore it up. It's probably eighty thousand dollars plus another twenty to get it back into shape, just to have it where it needs to be. The front of the building needs to be shored up, it needs to be protected from the rain. This is not a good idea. We need to just put, we need to put this structure up. And then going forward, Don, I, and I'm sure you'll lead the, lead it. You can, we can go talk about tearing this down. But right now, eighty thousand dollars for a gap in the street on North Front Street, when we can fill it for just another eighty thousand, it just doesn't make sense to me. We're going, and if we stop this right now, it's going to cost us money every minute going forward. Not in this time of the virus. This is not a good way to spend citizens' money. We need to think very carefully about how we're spending money right now. And we should not be spending money on stop work orders. Thank you.
Reminder that we still have the motion in the second, so the discussion is on the referring, referring committee. And then once we take that vote, we could still have further discussion. Alderman Scott Childress?
I'd like to move that we call the question.
So the question is to refer this to, back to committee. We had a motion by Michelle Hirsch and a second by Jeffrey Ventura Morrell. So the motion is to refer this to committee. I'll ask that you're, keep your thumbs up nice and strong and keep them there so I could see them. So all in favor to referring this discussion back to committee? One vote, Alderwoman Hirsch, all opposed? Eight votes opposed. The motion is denied to refer it back to committee. We are still on the question of the resolution. Alderman Scott Childress, and Alderman Davis, and Alderman Ventura Morrell?
Alderman Scott Childress here. So on the question, in this particular piece of legislation, I'd like to point out that the legislation, in a sense, requires a fairly long period of waiting. The resolution says that the Common Council of the City of Kingston authorizes the issuance of an immediate stop work order and directing the city engineer to follow up with a change order. So the the question is, what, we would have to figure out, and have to take a fair amount of time, it seems to me, to figure out what change order we'd be asking for. So would that change order simply be leave the section open as it is? Or would it be to tear down other sections? If we do that, we've got an issue, an RFP, that can take weeks, that can take a long time. You know, so like again, like I was saying, there's the question here of if we, if we vote for this resolution, it introduces a fair amount of indeterminacy, of big questions. The next thing is that the money that we're using for this purpose is from the lawsuit relating to for work that was done. So in essence, this is money that was paid into the city fund specifically to repair the the canopies. So it seems like to me that this is the best way to go, is to vote against this resolution and to complete the contract as it has been negotiated with the supplier.
Alderman Davis?
This is Alderman Davis here. I would like to make a motion that we vote on the resolution, is our resolution, I believe, is ninety-five. And we've, we've done a lot of talking on it, and people were, had their opinions one way or another. And so I would make a motion that we just proceed with the, with the resolution ninety-five.
All right, we have a motion on the floor in a second by Alderman Scott Childress. So the question is to vote on resolution number ninety-five. All in favor to to move this to a vote? Keep your thumbs up, please. So Tony, Jeffrey, Doug, Don, Rennie, Rita?
Let me make sure, I want to make sure. I want to make sure I'm voting correctly here. So say, say again how we're voting.
What we're voting on right now, the motion was to take the vote, to end converse, and discussion, and take the vote on resolution number ninety-five. So all in favor of Tony, Jeffrey, Don, Doug, Rennie, Rita? Michelle? Steve, are you?
Again, I just want, so a, a no vote would mean to move along the process. I just want to make sure we're all clear on this.
A no vote on this means we will continue discussion right now. Alderman Davis, motion that we continue discussion. All right, that makes sense? So again, the motion on the floor currently by Alderman Davis is to take a vote on resolution number ninety-five. I have eight votes. Patrick, how is, do you?
I'm sorry, I was off there for a second. I vote no on the resolution ninety.
Alderman O'Reilly, we're not at the resolution, there's just a motion to end the converse, or end the discussion, and to move to the vote. Would you like to move to the vote?
I sure would. Yes.
Is that passes nine zero, so now we will move to resolution number ninety-five. I'm going to ask the clerk to read the resolution again, so everybody knows what we're voting for.
Resolution ninety-five of two thousand twenty. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the suspension of the repair work being conducted at forty-three to forty-five North Front Street, and a stop work order be issued.
I'll just ask that you keep the thumbs up or thumbs down so that I could see it. I will call for the vote, all in favor of sending, of resolution number ninety-five. We have two votes, Alderman Talerman and Alderwoman Hirsch, for yes? No vote? All opposed?
Patrick O'Reilly's opposed.
Okay, that is two to seven. Resolution is not adopted. That ends that resolution. Thank you. Um, we now move to the first reading of Local Law Number Three. Just a note, this is just the first reading, there's no discussion or action on this for this month.
Local Law Three of two thousand twenty of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing an amendment to Local Law One.
to Local Law One of 2019, amending section 332-3, Land Board Registration Statement.
All right, thank you. This concludes our communications. Before I ask if anybody else has something, I just have a quick statement on our, the COVID-19 crisis. On Friday, Mayor Steve Noble sent a communication to me introducing an economic recovery plan to address the drastic loss of sales and property tax revenue in the City of Kingston due to the COVID crisis. The plan presents three estimates of possible revenue losses, a low, mid-range, and high loss scenario. These fluid estimates allow for the city to anticipate varying negative financial circumstances for appropriate policy responses. Based upon these estimates, the mayor also offered three phases to reduce city operating costs, and eventually, if necessary, municipal services. Undoubtedly, given the circumstance of the COVID crisis, the city will need to make financial sacrifices, but those serious decisions should be made with thoughtful consideration and with sufficient time for common council deliberation. We owe such due consideration to our staff, and particularly, our essential workers, who have bravely served us throughout the COVID crisis. Therefore, as council president, I'm going to be requesting an emergency meeting with the mayor, Comptroller John Tuohy, the Majority Leader, Finance Committee Chair, and Corporation Council, in order for the common council to better be informed of the executive branch's methods and reasoning of any proposed cuts before directors are sent to departments. Thank you. Does anybody else have anything before we adjourn the meeting? Alderman Scott Childress?
I would just ask all of the members of the council to see the email I sent, soliciting any potential questions relating to the hiring of the Housing, Director of Housing Initiatives. Thank you.
Alderman Shabbitt, then Alderwoman Worthington?
Yeah, actually, I have, I have rather a long, a lengthy list of people I would like to mention in, in closing here. I'll make them pretty brief, but I would like to go through the list just to get it on record. But again, I'll, I'll condense what I usually, I'll avoid any stories. First is Richard Crum, longtime police officer with the city, died recently, leaving behind several, several children and other family men or members. Adele Stabile, longtime Kingston resident. Again, you know, a lot of us Kingstonians knew her, she, she owned a very famous restaurant called The Bridge Circle around here, leaves behind a large family. Mary Boyce, another long-term family worker, she worked at polling places for years, leaves behind her husband Bill. Jared Wonderly, 35 years of age, recently, recently passed away. He was, he was a good athlete at high school. He worked at his parents' Wonderly's wall coverings, leaves behind two children. Charles Hoffa, Charles moved out of Kingston, was a Kingstonian, moved to North Carolina with IBM, leaves behind a wife, four children, a lot of family. I would say three quarters of his obituary was family members. And lastly, Gerard Ozzy Biker, well-known around Kingston, he was, you know, very involved in Kingston, donated a lot of services and goods to Kingston, especially for kids, very active in the community, Little League coach, he was a member of the White Eagle, he was on the Town of Ulster Planning Board, he founded Timely Signs back in '72, and, and he's been a benefactor to a lot of, a lot of programs here in the city. That's it.
Thank you. Alderwoman Worthington?
Hi, Rita Worthington here. So I just wanted to convey my, you know, my thanks to the City of Kingston, also to the Common Council, to the community at large. Many of you know that I lost my husband on Saturday, this past Saturday, May 2nd. And the, you know, the support that I have been given is immeasurable. I can't even, I have no words for, you know, all those that have reached out to me. I really appreciate it, it's a tough time for me right now. And, but I've had a lot of support, so it's making the, the days a little easier for me. I just wanted to convey my thanks publicly to you all. Thank you very much.
Alderman Shabbitt?
Yeah, I just want to say, it goes without saying that certainly Paul should've, would've been on my list. I didn't want to, I don't want to put one over on you, Rita, but certainly, we want the memory, his memory here at the closing.
Alderman Scott Childress?
Yes, I would like to close the meeting also in honor of Paul. One of the things I remember very much about Paul was his hands, he had amazing hands. He could tell stories just with his hands, big hands, and they were big, like his soul. And like I said last night, we will all be following in the wonderful model that he set for us, and hopefully, all of us can live in the way that he led us to live. And I'd also like to close the meeting in memory of Dan Gartenstein's father, who passed away also just over the weekend, so we know that this is a difficult time for everyone who loses someone, because it's so hard to move around, so hard to engage in the kind of necessary grieving that we think of as normal and standard. So our hearts go out to you, Rita, our hearts go out to Dan, and our hearts go out to all of those who are suffering so grievously in this time of great pain, and disease, and economic and social dislocation.
Thank you. Alderman Davis?
I'd like to echo what everybody was saying, and Rita, you know, on the passing of Paul, and it was an honor to be able to call him a cousin, and, you know, every time I seen him, it was, it brought joy to me to be able to say, and what's up, cuz? And so, and I'm gonna miss that, and so I just wanted to close with that, and say, sorry, Rita.
Anyone else? I'd just like to also echo my, the condolences, Rita. I didn't know Paul well, but when I saw you guys together, the, the love that you two shared was inspiring, and the strength that you have shown is, is, is pretty amazing. So we're all gonna be thinking for, of you, praying for you, and I'm sure if you need anything, you have nine friends here for you. With that, and as I get choked up, I will take a motion to adjourn. I didn't think anybody was gonna motion there. Steve Shabbitt motions, Alderman Scott Childress seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We hereby stand adjourned until the next scheduled meeting. Thank you very much, everyone.
And thank you, everyone, for a really wonderful discussion about that issue related